They don't discuss motorized cars. They define the golf cart. So you go. And it means that these commanders insurance, porn, etc.
We're ready to start. Yeah.
We got, we got public comment coming up and, but yes.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay, we are at 6:30. You'd like to go ahead and start the meeting this evening? If all who are in attendance would please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome, excuse me, I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 24th, 2025 Petri City Planning Commission. Going to go ahead and look at staff, any additions or deletions for this evening? Any announcements or reports? Okay.
Is that on? Oh, there we go.
There we go.
There we go. Nothing from me. Shayla, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Nothing? Okay, perfect. Go ahead and do the approval of minutes. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to go through the minutes. Any comments, questions, additions or deletions?
Looks good.
Okay. Then do I have a motion to approve the planning commission minutes from the March 10th, 2025 meeting?
Motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from March 10th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved as submitted. Okay, no public hearings for this evening? No old agenda items, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So new agenda items, the first is the conceptual site plan warehouse and office 1601 Moba Drive. Turn it over to staff.
So, as Commissioner Rittenhour stated, this is 1601 Moba Drive is the address. It is lot number five in the Moba Industrial Complex, right here. And just to get your bearings, this is Earl's Auto Place and the Moon Valley Nursery and the new development on these two lots that's going to include the pickleball. The zoning is GI General Industrial. Here's a close-up of the aerial of the lot. And here's the site plan. So the proposal is to construct a 25,000 square foot warehouse, as you see here, next to a two-story office building. And this is a testing yard for the potential tenant for this warehouse here. The tract is 6.33 acres, currently undeveloped, as you saw. And a note regarding the setbacks you saw in your packet, that there was a variance request that they presented to city council last week, and it was approved. So, we can move forward and look at this as it is laid out. This red line here, just for reference, the inside one is, was the existing 50-foot setback. And it has been reduced, it was approved to be reduced to 30 feet, which is the outside line there. So you'll see that then the building, get my, there we go. You'll see that the building and the parking then is both within that, meets that 30-foot setback. Both uses, office and warehousing, are permitted uses in the GI zoning district. The parking, let's see, the parking requirement is for 73 spaces, and they have provided 73 spaces there out front. This is the entrance for the parking field, and then there's also an entrance here for the loading. And those being separate, obviously, is going to reduce any conflict between truck traffic and auto traffic. The parcel does abut Highway 74, which is classified as an R2L highway, as you know, and therefore triggers an architectural review from the planning commission, so that will come later on. Make sure I've got everything here. Yep, that's about it. So, staff is of the opinion that the proposed site plan meets the zoning ordinance requirements and development standards.
Okay, thank you. Do we have the applicant or representative?
Good evening. My name's Chuck Ogletree with South Tree Commercial Development, and we are the developers for this new campus for Ospus Utility Services. Ospus Utility Service is basically a, excuse me, a utility infrastructure contractor. They have trucks located all over the country that basically support utility poles and the infrastructure transformers and that type of thing staged all around the country. And they've been located in Petri City for approximately 10 years now, and when their lease was up recently, they wanted to downsize, so we started working with them on this campus here. And they're currently located in Noonan, but they'd like to move back to Petri City. So, as we sat down and started trying to lay this out, one of their, their design priorities was that, you know, they wanted to make sure we could leave this existing buffer that's in place here now, and that's part of the reason that we needed the variance. We shifted the, the building and the, and the parking to the, to the east and to the south, so that we can completely stay out of this buffer. This testing yard that was alluded to, basically what it is, they install utility poles, and then they have this testing equipment that determines, you know, how much pressure it takes to break the poles. I mean, so they'll be out there, you know, just testing the torque on the poles to see, you know, how much they can withstand. They also have a rodeo that they put on a couple of times a year as well. Not that there's anything that's, that's, you know, that ugly out there stored, they just wanted to make sure we had a nice buffer between Highway 74 and this, this testing yard here. It is about an 18,000 square foot, two-story office building, and then the warehouse is about 25,000 square feet. This should accommodate all their needs. We think we've got a pretty good layout here with that, so we're more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Go ahead to my right, Commissioner Hemner, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Haynes, any questions?
No, not for this project.
Okay. Stay with you, any comments?
I appreciate the, leaving the additional screening. I know there's a power easement up there, but I appreciate leaving the screening right there along 74, those testing yards. I know they, they normally keep them pretty clean, but for this purpose, that additional buffer would keep anything unsightly from 74, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Hemner?
I echo those compliments, and as well, these are always really great developments to see in the city, so glad to see you move back to Petri City.
Good. And Chuck, thank you very much for explaining what that yard was going to be. That was going to be one of my questions, exactly what that is, and I am somewhat familiar with the Lyman's Rodeo sort of, sort of thing, so thank you for bringing that up too. I don't have any other comments or questions. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the conceptual site plan as submitted, with the understanding that the variance indicated has already been approved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the, how exactly did you phrase that?
I can't remember if I said caveat or not, just with the note that the proposed setback has already been approved.
Yeah, and you said that was approved on, on the 20th?
That's correct.
Okay, so it was approved on the 20th, okay. So with the front setback already approved by the city, we have a second, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have building elevations, office building 455 North Lake Drive.
All right, we saw this lot very recently when we looked at their landscape plan, and now we have building elevations for the building. It is located here at the intersection of Aberdeen Parkway and North Lake Drive. Partners Pizza and whatnot, you know, is over here, and another office building right here that is the same, same owner, ownership between these lots. It's a close-up aerial, it is currently under construction, and zone GC General Commercial. Okay, just to get your bearings, I've located a key plan here that will explain which elevation you're looking at, coordinating with, you know, this west elevation, that's looking at this side of the building, so hopefully that gives you a framework there. This is submitted by Tomco Construction, and there were elevations previously proved in 2017, but the building has changed, the building shape has changed a good bit since then, so the new, thus the new review being required. So the, as a general rule, you know, the facades should be at least 80%, the front facade should be at least 80% primary materials, such as brick and stone, and side facades 50%. And what we have here is, you know, aside from the windows, 100% brick on all sides. The, there's a canopy proposed, and of course, the windows and then the entry doors are proposed to be clear, clear anodized aluminum, so they'll be, you know, it's a finish that protects them. So colors, you can see down here at the bottom, are basically a dark, a dark brown and a whitish color, and then the mortar is proposed to match the brick colors. That's what's in these boxes right here. The lighter color being Winter Haven White, and the brown called Bastille. So some of the architectural requirements in the ordinance are that they should be complementary to the neighboring buildings in the area, and here's a few snapshots of some neighboring buildings. This is that office building right next door to the lot. The Bank of America Building is out here at the corner of 54 North Lake Drive. This is where the Royal Bowling Lanes are in this building here, and then this, of course, you probably remember, is the new proposed structure, retail on the bottom, town homes on top, that will replace this building right here. So you can see, we've got some lighter colors nearby, and then more of a brownish, brownish brick, so they do, the proposed colors, whoops, wrong direction. Proposed colors do blend in with these, with the surrounding neighborhood. So staff is of the opinion that proposed building elevations for the office building at 455 North Lake Drive meet the city's development standards.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have the applicant or applicant rep with us this evening? Please come to the microphone and state your name and who you're representing.
Andrew Dean with Tomco Construction.
Do you have anything else to add to staff's presentation?
Laura did a perfect job.
Okay, perfect. Mr. Haynes, going to go ahead and start with you, any questions of staff or the applicant?
The only question I have is, it looks like the building is going to have a slight parapet roof on the top. Is all the mechanical equipment going to be shielded by that parapet?
I believe that is the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
I think it looks good.
Mr. Hemner?
No questions.
Any comments?
No, overall, it looks good.
Mr. Haynes?
I think it blends in, blends in well, it's a timeless palette, and glad to see it happening in our city.
I think the only question that I had, is there any delineation in any offsets on the sides of the buildings, or they base, or the building, are they basically straight, flush?
Can you say that again, sir?
Are there any delineation, is there any out? Moving it out into 3D, because, I mean, right now, we just have, have the 2D. So is there any bump outs? You know what I'm, I'm saying?
So on the south elevation, you will have a little bit of a drop-off, and then a retaining wall, or a foundation wall on the backside, so I mean, it is going straight up per the key plan over there, it's going to match that, and then you have a little bit of a drop-off to the pond, submit pond towards North Lake. So you have a little bit of a delineation there, but really, it's going to fit right in that spot that is called out on the key plan.
Right, and I apologize if I didn't ask more, more understandably, anything on, on the actual sides of the building?
Doug will explain better for that.
I don't see anything on, on the 2D, of course, because it's 2D. It has no top view or anything like that, so.
I'm Doug Carruthers, the architect, and it is flush. I mean, it's following the, the footprint of the exterior of the building. The site is so tight, there's very little room for any in and out.
Okay.
I'd love to do that, but we just don't have much opportunity for that.
And it was just difficult to tell if at all, you know, just for the 2D?
It's not the current plan, I, to do that, just because of the space limitation of the buildable area.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, you have the delineation between the dark brown brick and, and the white brick, that will separate it out. I didn't know if, in that part, if there was also a bump out, you know, going on with that or not, but, but I understand, that is a very tight space. I actually used to have an office at 403, so I'm familiar with the properties right around there, so, yeah, it's, it's pretty tight. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the building elevations for the office building at 455 North Lake Drive.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye for approval?
Aye.
Okay. Approved as submitted. Thank you very much. Okay, our third item is the modified building elevations splash and dash car wash 210 Stevens Entry.
All right, this one may look familiar to you. We have looked at this before, and it was approved, and they have some even better improvements they would, they feel they would like to put forth, so we'll take a look at that. So the location is at the intersection of Prime Point and Stevens Entry, just a block basically off of Highway 54, right here. Here's an aerial photograph of the existing car wash, and it is zone GC General Commercial. So what I've done basically is compare existing versus what was previously approved and what is currently being presented to us. As you know, the, boy, those look really dark up there, but the existing building is in need of some repairs. There, this fascia up here is sort of falling apart, and the, it's all brick, and it's sort of a reddish-orange brick. And then, what they've brought to us previously is what you see here in the middle, and they were proposing this, an extension on two of the existing bays in order to make room for an automated, two automated car wash bays, which was going to stick out the back. This would be the front view that faces Stevens Entry. And the colors previously were sort of warm, warm grays being proposed. So right underneath, you have the matching views, and also similar to the existing. So this would be the front view Stevens Entry, this was what was approved previously, and this is the new, the new version. So basically, what they've done is taken the extended bays, which went out the back before, and brought them out the front and moved it to the end. So it would be the existing two bays on the end, that they would turn into this, it has a garage sort of feeling, there's doors on it, and they're adding a peaked roof, so it really just gives it some nice definition there. And then the rear, so you can see the rear now will be flush instead of the extensions. So the new colors. The new, and then here's a little axonometric view, so this is Prime Point out here, and this would be Stevens Entry, sort of a view from above. The new colors are more, are even warmer, the paint, the, the brick, if you recall, and this is similar to what was approved before, there's a stacked stone knee wall around the bottom, and the color's a little bit different, whereas before, it was all sort of grays, now we've got the, a little bit of this darker color coming through. And then the proposed roof here is supposed to be asphalt shingles, sort of a dark, dark brown color. And then they are still proposing to paint the existing brick. It's called rice grain, I believe, which is a really interesting name for a paint color, which is a sort of just a creamy, a creamy beige color, and then all the metals, the metal fascia at the top, and downspouts and that type of thing, are this dark, medium-to-dark bronze color. And then, you may recall, they're proposing on the interior of the wash bays to put up this vinyl PVC paneling, sorry, not vinyl, over top of the brick for ease of cleaning. The, the current brick is, is pretty, pretty dirty and unsightly, so, and that will be white. They're proposing hardy siding in several places. Actually, they may need to clarify for us where there is still brick. I think inside, in the internal bays, there might be some brick left that they're going to paint, so they're basically covering most of the brick with new hardy siding, and whereas before, it was not proposed to be, shoot, what do you call those panels again? But anyway, you see the vertical, third vertical design on the, on the, on the hardy siding. Uh, let's see. I think that sums it up. So while the proposal to upgrade the car wash similar to before satisfies the majority of the city's design standards, and of course enhances the visual appearance of the site and the community in general, Section 728 of the Land Development Ordinance states that natural brick should not be painted. Just wanted to point that out. And also, I did want to, so far, I forgot, whoop, had, I didn't point these out, I don't know if you noticed, because of the new design of the extended bays, and the way they've situated on the end, the front facade actually has more primary materials than it had before. It was very little, less than 30% before, and now it's almost up to 60. And then really, they've all, they've all increased, so 100% on this east side over here, I'm sorry, yeah, east side, and then the west side, 81%.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Do we have the applicant or applicant's rep with us this evening? Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Hey, my name is Chris Helgath, I'm the proud owner of this car wash here.
Do you have anything to add?
Not really, the only thing that would change, it just, it's not on the plans, because what Rick did is the, the building, if you look at the yellow vacuums out front, we'll be removing those too. And so the plan is this, is so we wanted to, I wanted to put the bays towards the end, because we're anticipating, if you've seen the one over on Georgian Park, it gets pretty busy, and they kind of get out in the road, so we're trying to make it where they can snake around the back, not cause any traffic problems, and then we're going to take those vacuums, and we're going to line them across the back, so you won't even see the vacuums from the front of the road anymore.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Hemner, any questions?
Just one question. So, in the material that's provided to us, there's a call-out that, in terms of the standards and enhancements for visual appearances for buildings like this, in Section 728 of the Land Development Ordinance, it states that natural brick should not be painted, which is a should, doesn't mean you have to.
Right.
It's just not a shall.
Right.
But just want to get a better understanding of where the, where the brick is in terms of being seen, again, it was.
I think the only brick that's getting painted is the brick that, if you look inside the bay.
Just kind of inside.
Kind of beams up there. I don't have a good way to wrap that with any sort of a structure, you know, with any material.
That's where I was going next, is just understanding how, if there was opportunities to wrap it, but if there's not.
I, I mean, the only thing I could do is I'd have to build out around the columns, but it's, then it'll make it where it's too narrow, it'll be a problem for people pulling through, and it may damage a car or something like that. But then, on the sides, you know, I think, Rick, did we decide on the very end down there, is that what we're doing, is we're covering that, or are we painting that?
I'm Rick Raxson, the architect. So, most of the, it was like a brown, right now, it's like a very brownie kind of brick that's there right now, and you'll see, most of the perimeter is, is just clad in hardy with vertical battening boards.
Thank you.
That's what I was, I didn't know if you could interrupt you. But anyway, battening boards and hardy painted to that, that color. So again, the brick is almost gone in terms of any external appearance.
Got it.
And, and we thought, rather than leave the brick itself that color, just, you know, when you're cladding and whatnot, make it all match, the exterior color, interior to exterior as best as possible.
Perfect, yeah, thank you for helping me understand that.
Mr. Haynes, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Stay with you, any comments?
The only comment I have is I appreciate the slight red tone in the panels chosen for the stone wainscoting. I think that'll match what little bit of redstone the BP station has on it, since it's mostly windows, but I think it'll, it'll add a little bit of coordination with that, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And before, I just want to say, you know, it seems like you guys probably have a tough job up here, you know, you don't always get appreciated, but through what you guys are doing, it does make what I'm trying to do a little bit more difficult, but I think at the end of the day, it'll be a better project too, so, you know, I do recognize that. And I have been in the community here for a really long time, okay, since the late 90s. I really don't need this, you know, this is just kind of one of those things, I drove up past it, and it's just an eyesore, and I was like, oh, we can do something with this. So we, you know, I've owned it, I don't know, maybe we're on like eight, month eight or something like that, but I think that, once we get this approval, order equipment, we'll get to work on it, but I think it's going to be something good, I really do, so, I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Mr. Hemner, any comments?
I was just going to say, overall, this is going to, I think it's going to look really great. Much nicer upgrade in comparison to what's there right now, so thank you for investing in it, and, you know, I've, I've known this car wash for a long time, it's a good car wash, and I'm glad that it's going to be looking really good.
Where are they set, I mean, we're even doing it, you know, I mean, the goal always is to try to make somebody, but I mean, we've got a different approach real time, you know, everybody likes subscription model, and we're going to achieve, or, you know, and make it where you really can, the people in the community can use it, not get, yeah, so hopefully it works out really good, and we're looking forward to it, so, I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I echo both commissioners' comments, I think it's a really nice design, I actually like the newer design much better with the addition of the bays on the side, kind of making it more of a, I don't want to say a house, but it kind of almost looks more because of the roof and, and the way, instead of just a flat, you know, straight across building, so it does give it a little bit more character. And the addition of the colored rock at the bottom of the stone does really set it off and, and makes it just that much nicer, so I agree, thank you for, for the upgrades you're going to be doing. Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept these exterior elevations for the splash and dash car wash as submitted.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other comments, questions? Nope? Okay. If that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved as submitted, thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all, thank you. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you, Jim.
Okay, so we have no workshop items. Laura, before we go ahead and adjourn this planning commission meeting, our next meeting?
April 14th.
Okay.
Currently, two, possibly three items.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments, staff, anything? No? Commissioners, anything from you before we adjourn? No? Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn? No? Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion to adjourn and a second. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Planning commission meeting adjourned. Now going to hand it over to Kenneth for the UDO.
All right. All right. Call it ordered for the UDO steering committee meeting. All right. Starting with any announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. All right. Good evening. Um, so I'm still reaching out to, um, the city of Fayetteville. Um, I know that we would like to have a conversation with them and just to kind of understand some of the, um, kind of do's and don'ts experiences. So, um, I've been in contact with their director. It's just that we keep missing each other from meeting points, but I will have a, a better follow-up with you, um, in the next meeting. Hopefully we will meet by then.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other announcements?
No.
Perfect. All right. Public comments.
Good evening, committee. My name's Keith Larson and I'm a member of the transportation advisory group. And I just wanted to let you be appraised of the work of the transportation advisory group that has some similar tracks to what you're attempting to accomplish with the UDO. And that is, uh, we have some tasks from the city manager to review some legacy ideas or proposals forwarded from the citizen advisory group for path safety back from twenty twenty-two. One of those was considering, uh, the placement of tags on the rear of golf carts. And this is a public safety concern. Many residents have had issues and conflicts with pa, uh, carts passing them or in crashes and then fleeing the scene and not having an ability of the victims or witnesses to identify the fleeing cart because there's no tag as it flees away or drives away. So we've been, uh, looking at that issue and then it comes into, okay, if we make a proposal, uh, and then that would be a, you know, require a change in the city ordinance on the registration of the carts. And so that's one of the things we're working on now for Public Works, who's our, our department overseeing, uh, the, our tag. And for the city manager to address that, um, i- issue of concern to not only the city manager, but also the city council. But while going through that process, there are many things, if, if you look at the ordinance overall, uh, of Peachtree City, yeah, you could, uh, divide it into administrative and operations. And then what this, uh, committee panel is focused on is development and redevelopment and zoning, yeah, issues, concerns. So there are many legacy issues and terms and phrases in the city ordinance, both in the operational administrative part as well as in the development rezoning part, which have, um, obsolete or missing current terms of reference and references and best practices. And so, um, I've shared with, uh, your committee printouts of my initial analysis of all the passages in, within the city ordinance body, including the operations administration and the zoning redevelopment, that references the pass systems, carts and users, as well as Americans with Disabilities Act. And so all of these could use a refresh and review so that, you know, it come, it comes into the future of identifying those things. Our quick wins. I think that's one of the tracks you're taking and certainly we can, uh, I can provide some of that information for you as you incorporate and move forward, uh, respecting to, uh, cart and bicycle parking, for example. That's an issue that you frequently wrestle with when you're looking at a development or redevelopment and the parking plan, uh, vehicles. Um, but, and then as well as some other ordinances. So, um, open to hearing your, you know, feedback and comment and, uh, that I can pass on to our tag as far as things that you would like to hear from us or from any of our volunteers to provide as residents to you for input. And those are things that you'd say, well, you guys take care of it over on your side. Uh, and that, and that's fine too. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Larson. All right. Any other public comment? Perfect. All right. Uh, approval of the minutes. Did everybody get an opportunity to take a look at those? Any questions, comments on those?
No.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to approve?
Chairman, I, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes from the March tenth, twenty twenty-five workshop.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approved. All right. Discussion items. We have seven items, uh, for this week. Um, we're going to start by first talking about the finalization of the goals, mission statement and objectives. I know that we have those documents in teams right now. Um, and I'm not sure if we can bring those up. Are we able to bring those up?
Do you, do you know how to? I don't know how to pull up teams. We can probably do it from the. Don't have team bundles.
Okay. While those are being pulled up, just real quick. Um, so as you know, we've been talking about the mission statement, the goals and the objectives for about a month, uh, or so on this. We have an initial version that was presented. When we first started this conversation, we've gone through several version of the, versions of those, uh, by reviewing those, questioning the, some of the wording associated with it as well. Also just kind of picking it apart to make sure that, you know, it kind of encompasses everything that we want to do, uh, with this. Um, we have been, uh, putting some comments within the three major files, uh, over the past month. Um, there's one comment in particular that I want to go ahead and just reference real quick. And we can, again, I don't think we need to pull it up yet. I can just describe what this is real quick. So within the mission statement, I'll go ahead and just read this off real quick. Our mission is to create the unified development ordinance, or UDO, for Peachtree City that consolidates zoning, land use, site development and building regulations. Remember building regulations, it's going to be important. Into a single accessible document to enhance clarity, improve efficiencies and support sustainable growth for residents, developers and city officials. Uh, there was a comment, uh, that was put in here. Was that, was, was that you?
That was me.
All right. I, I'll go ahead and read it off real quick and then you can, uh, build on it as you see fit. Uh, so the, the comment you put in there was, "One point of clarity may need to discuss building regulations and what that entails. Is it solely related to architectural standards or are we including the framework for the city's building development, uh, buildings department as well?" This would require the city to follow ZPL, zoning procedure laws. Anytime, uh, items in the building department's ordinances need to be updated and or modified if adopted in this manner.
So that, um, I learned that, uh, of course, I'm not sure everyone in here is familiar with ZPL. We all deal with it whether we want to or not. Um, but, um, during my time at Henry County, one of the things we had, the building department regulations were an appendix of the unified land development code. Anytime we needed to make a change, like for instance, when the Metro North Georgia Metropolitan Water Planning District gave out plumbing code requirements that each jurisdiction had to adopt, we actually had to follow zoning procedure law, even though it had nothing to do with zoning. And that was just in, in relation to, um, the plumbing code changes to the currently adopted state minimum plumbing code had nothing to do with stream buffers, had nothing to do with land use. It was solely related to plumbing code, but since the building regulations were adopted as an appendix of the ULDC, we had to go through that adoption process. So if, if we, it's just one thing to consider. Many other jurisdictions like Fayetteville, they have their building regulations, all of them in their UDO. It's just one thing that we'll need to consider moving forward that staff would also have to take part in. Anytime there's a change, you would have to follow ZPL, even if it was just that framework.
Right. That makes sense. Yep. So within the areas that you're referencing right now, uh, in terms of building development, we actually have those in the court, uh, code of ordinances right now. It's in chapter eighteen. That includes things like the adoption of state building codes, permitting procedures, inspection protocols, contractor licensing requirements, and then also unsafe structures and enforcement actions. So all of those things, obviously if we're talking about, of course, making that one consolidated document would bring all of those things within this. Now as to the scope of the mission statement in terms of like, you know, do we want to get super specific on that? This is my opinion on this. I, 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 I think keeping it broad for right now is still good on this. Of course, then we can get into the nitty gritty details of, you know, ZPL and the way that it works with that. Uh, of course, once we start putting everything together on that. But what are your, what are your thoughts?
I personally, I think the mission statement as we currently have it written in there, I, I am fine with it. I, I believe that's a great mission statement. It's, uh, it's short, sweet, to the point, but it also states the actual intent of what, what the goal for this committee is. So I'm, I'm perfectly fine leaving it with stating building regulations. And as you said, as we get deeper into the weeds of it, we can talk about what that may or may not be.
Sounds good.
I agree.
Okay, perfect.
No, I, I think that's good.
Awesome. All right. Uh, any other questions on the mission statement? Perfect. Uh, the goal, I'll go ahead and read that off, uh, real quick as well. Um, it's very similar to the mission statement. Uh, "Through expert collaboration and public engagement, we will develop and implement a comprehensive unified development ordinance, or UDO, by the end of twenty twenty-six that consolidates existing zoning, land use, site development and building regulations into a single and accessible document while also improving usability and aligning with modern technology and best practices." So let me break this down really quick because we've, we've talked a lot about this and just to give you guys some background in terms of like what this is specifically trying to communicate. So the very first part of it says, "Through expert collaboration and public engagement, expert collaboration can mean everything from volunteer experts to consultants that we could potentially bring in to help with this process, individuals who specifically, you know, this is what they do for a living on this." So it's written broad enough to help incorporate, again, any experts, either paid or volunteered for that. And public engagement is also very purposely put in this because again, we want to hear from the public. We want to give opportunities as well. And we're going to talk about those opportunities in a moment in terms of the way that we can, uh, not just communicate what we're doing, but give people the opportunity to communicate back to us on, uh, the way that this is going. So again, that's very purposely the first part to say that, you know, we're going to bring in collaboration and public engagement and really highlight that very specifically. Then the next part of the goal says again, we're going to develop the, uh, the, the single document using, with, uh, existing zoning, land use, et cetera, very similar to the goals that we have right there. But the last part is what's really separates us apart from the mission statement after that part, where it says, "While also improving usability and aligning with modern technology and best practices." Improving usability is obviously a major component of this because we want people to be able to understand, uh, the way that our ordinances are set up, whether they're a resident or developer or in, or somewhere in between. Uh, and also aligning with modern technology and best practices. The modern technology component could be everything from, you know, making sure that we have this set up in a way so that way, you know, it can be easily accessible through technology to the fact, and this is something that we've talked a lot about as, as an example, any sort of modernization that needs to happen with the ordinances. With respect that we're not changing the intent behind the ordinances or writing anything new, but, you know, making suggestions in terms of like what we can do to modernize these things and of course incorporate best practices as well to make sure that we have things like definitions consistent across all of our ordinances. Um, uh, you know, making sure that we are not having procedures that are frankly just not able to be done anymore because the technology or the processes don't exist anymore. So there's going to be those things that are going to be very important and part of the goal, uh, that we're ultimately looking to accomplish on this. So any questions on, on any of those?
No, I think that sounds good. Um, I, I think it's very well defined, um, you know, while still being open enough that it gives us, you know, some ability to go ahead and, and look in different areas. Um, but I think it covers exactly what we're trying to do as part of this UDO project. So I think it's very good.
All right. And then the last document, I'm not sure if we had any success on pulling it up.
Yes, but I'll have to work to get it projected.
Okay. While that's being done, just some background on this. So the last part that we're going to talk about is the objectives. Um, you may have heard me say just a moment ago, part of the goal is to try, attempt to get this done by the end of twenty twenty-six. So we've already put, you know, once we adopt the goal, uh, you know, we put our stake in the ground saying, this is when ideally we're going to be having this done. What the objectives originally was, was, uh, in previous versions that we've been working on over the past month were things being like, and they were fairly vague. It was like, we're going to engage the public. We're going to, uh, create an initial draft of the UDO, et cetera. Uh, none of it was using any of the smart model that we talked about, which means like, you know, it's time bound, it's measurable, et cetera, on that. And the way that the objectives are written now helps, incorporates all those best practices on this. And I'll say this as well as that, myself, uh, in the, the planning department, we met, uh, last week to kind of talk about the feasibility. First of all, could we actually get this done in twenty twenty-six and get their professional opinion on this? Thank you so much. That's exactly it. Thank you. Um, you know, we wanted to get their professional opinion in terms of some of these things and get their expertise to weigh in on these. And we also kind of picked these apart, meaning that, uh, you know, if we're saying that we're going to lay the, set the UDO foundation in place like, okay, we have these initial ideas, but are these the right ideas? And as well, if there is an idea and we're saying that we're going to try and get something done, what's the feasibility of it actually getting done and what's the timeline associated with that? Um, something, just to call out as well, and we're going to walk through this in just a moment, is that originally there were five objectives. We narrowed it down to three, uh, moving forward. And the idea is that each objective in each of the three has a very specific theme, which is the first part, which is setting the UDO foundation, which is basically, uh, you know, saying that we're going to get ready to do, uh, and get all the materials ready to do the UDO. The next phase is phase two, which is actually creating the initial, uh, draft of it. And then the final phase is actually finalizing the UDO. So I'm going to go through each one of these individually and I'm going to start at the very top right here. Um, so setting the UDO foundation. Uh, so we talked a lot about this uh, amongst the steering committee and also with staff about, you know, what are the steps that would, we feel could be, would make us really comfortable, uh, with us, uh, getting ready for this? And more importantly, what's the timeline for this total phase as well? You can see right now that we're set, we, we went ahead and just said, this phase started in January twenty twenty-five, which is aligned with when we actually started talking about our goals and our mission statement, et cetera, on that. And then the idea is that we will have this phase completed by the end of June twenty twenty-five. And each one of these steps, uh, each, each part of this phase is broken down into a few steps. The first one is establishing, uh, committee goals, mission statement, objectives, the conversation we're having right now. Ideally, we'll finalize those hopefully, uh, in a few moments. Uh, but the idea is that we'll complete that in March twenty twenty-five. So therefore it has the March twenty twenty-five date associated with it. The next part is creating the UDO first draft outline to structure regulations logically. Um, so here's my prop, and you guys have probably seen the, a lot of this except for the folks in the public, is that Fayetteville actually did a UDO, uh, uh, back in twenty twenty-three and they've revised it, uh, a few times since then. But it's a really fantastic document that they put together. This is actually the slim version. This is just the outline of it. Uh, the actual UDO itself is, you know, six hundred, four hundred pages, something. It's, it's, it's. It's a lot. It's massive. Uh, so the, again, you know, it definitely reflects the fact that the, the outline of it is, you know, forty pages by itself. Um, so the idea is that we will work to start creating our own version of this. The, the idea behind it is just, it's just putting down ideas, not written in stone. It's going to go through a lot of changes moving forward. Uh, Mr. Larson, what was great about, of course, you talking a moment ago and also providing us some materials that the transportation advisory group has already done, is that we can start to incorporate some of these things into this step right here, which is going to be the steering committee's next step, uh, after we approve our goals and mission statement and all that as well. So thank you so much for already providing, uh, some really great thought starters for us in the way that we can incorporate it into this process. Um, so that's going to be something that we're going to be working on through April twenty twenty-five. Uh, so a lot of work to do and not a whole lot of time, but we do have at least a, a very strong, uh, start. And thank you Fayetteville, uh, for that. We can start to look at what they did and start to look as well, uh, and start to at least organize our initial thoughts around that. And of course, again, the materials that the, uh, transportation advisory group, uh, gave us and some of the materials that staff has already given us as well can help us start populating our own version and not just purely copying Fayetteville on that. The next step, um, is learning from Fayetteville's UDO process to adopt best practices. Um, so this was, uh, mentioned in the announcements, uh, staff is already reaching out to Fayetteville to see about getting them to come in. And the idea behind this is because they just did the UDO, is to have them come in and just share their thoughts in terms of like, what worked really well, what, uh, surprises did they have, et cetera, on that? Just so we can, uh, ideally take some of their learnings and apply it to us, uh, because, you know, it would be great just to. Uh, because, you know, it would be great just to have, uh, to be able to leverage somebody else's expertise and to hear what they have to say about that. And that has an April 2025, uh, completion date associated with that. The next part, establish a website presence for transparency and updates. Uh, because we are a committee, uh, and obviously this is a very large project and we want to be transparent. We do want to have a website, uh, set up for us as part of Peachtree Cities, uh, larger website. So that way we can say exactly, you know, like, what our purpose is, which again, the mission statement will be able to do that. What our actions are, who's part of the committee, et cetera, on that. So that way we can be very transparent and give the public opportunities to understand what we're doing. And, uh, again, you know, just be transparent on that. Uh, the next part, uh, is, uh, communicating the plan, uh, to city council to keep officials engaged early on. Uh, so the idea behind this is basically, when we went in front of city council and we proposed, uh, doing the UDO steering committee, uh, when they, uh, one of the commitments we made to them when they voted on approving this committee, uh, was for us to give regular updates. So really what this is, is, is our first update in, in May 2025. Uh, would love for us to be able to have the opportunity to go in front of city council to really, uh, primarily focus on saying, here's what our goal is, here's what our mission statement is, and here's what our objectives is, which we're somewhat walking through right now. So the idea is just to give them a very clear op, uh, understanding of, uh, what the plan is on this. Because again, I know that they are very curious about, uh, the timing on this and ultimately what, uh, ultimately may need to go into this. And so that's to help, uh, set those expectations. And ideally, uh, beginning a conversation that will continue on through the end of 2026. The next part, identify the first run of all existing zoning, land use, site development and building regulations to spot overlaps, conflicts and outdated provisions. This is something that, uh, as we know, city staff have been working on prior even to the UDO, uh, steering committee being set up, because they were noting like, oh, this is already out of date, this will need revising, et cetera, on that. Uh, so we already have a very good list, but obviously they're already working on, uh, pulling together, uh, all those documents uh, and as well providing an initial list of opportunities for us to take a look at on that. So that's for May 2025. And finally, on here, the last part is potentially recruit experts slash consultants for legal and planning expertise. Um, again, the idea is that we want to leverage as many, uh, as many resources as possible, uh, on this. And, you know, besides just being transparent as, uh, to the public, you know, we want to be able to leverage the public and any sort of, uh, consultants as well to help us out in terms of developing what will ultimately be a rather large document on this and, uh, making sure it's made the best as possible on that. So the completion date for that is June 2025, and that would then end the very first phase of the UDO process. Already threw out a whole bunch of stuff, I'll pause for just a second, any questions or comments so far?
I, I think overall it, it looks really good. Um, I, I do think it's aggressive but doable. Um, there's, there's a lot of, as, as we talked initially, you know, there's a lot of things, there's more things we don't know than we know.
Absolutely.
And, and as we go through, uh, you know, some of the things that, that we don't know, we'll, we'll come forward as part of that review. Um, and that was one of my questions and, and comments on, on the Fayetteville UDO. Uh, you know, I looked at more of that as, as an initial assessment.
Mm-hmm.
You know, kind of going through, because I, I think we'll be going back to that document a, again and again, uh, when something comes up and says, well, hey, we've identified this and, well, let's go and take a look and, and see what Fayetteville did. Um, so I, I think that's kind of a, a living process as, as we go through. Um, I think overall, like I said, I, I think it's, it's doable. Um, but it's, it is going to be a lot of work in a, in a short time. Um, you know, especially, um, when we get to the point of, of being able to say, okay, you know, we feel comfortable now reaching out, uh, you know, in June and saying, we, we need help in, in these areas, at least an initial assessment of, of we need help in these areas. So we definitely have to have the foundation there and, and a much, and as much work as we can up to that point, um, where we can say that, hey, you know, we feel pretty comfortable of where we're sitting at, um, to be able to go ahead and, and get into that next phase, which of course you have up as, as objective two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and we know you always, we always should plan for success. Um, but, you know, have the understanding that, that things will happen along the way. Um, you know, and, and we'll just have to assess those things when, when they come forward.
Absolutely.
As to what those dates, um, you know, look like as, as we get a little further into it here in the next couple of months. So, but overall, I, I think it looks good.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. This is aggressive.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's, it's, it's going to take work to meet these dates. Uh, but obviously, this is what we're here to do, so we will do our very best in order to accomplish these. Uh, overall, you know, these are, they're realistic. Um, but it's just going to take a lot of elbow grease in order to meet these, yeah. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. All right, let's talk about, uh, Phase Two, which is, uh, much lighter, uh, but it actually is more work than the first phase, uh, on this. So the idea behind this is from, uh, June 2025 through October, is really just to ha, like, have everything put together. That doesn't mean that it's the final version or anything like that. It's probably not going to be even really that great in comparison to the, the, the final version on it. But the idea is that it's just a draft. Uh, think of it this way, is that, again, you know, like, over the next month, we're going to be working on this version of the, uh, outline of this. And then the idea is that we'll basically just have everything organized underneath ultimately. Yeah, you're good right there, you're good. Is basically to have everything organized under the outline that we, uh, are going to be developing and I most likely be revising along the way. So that way we just have at least something, uh, that is made on this. So, uh, the ideas behind this is that we're going to finalize all the identifiable, uh, existing zoning, land use, site development, building regulations. Uh, and again, you know, we're going to continue to spot any sort of overlaps, conflicts, outdated provisions, et cetera. And the idea is that we'll have at least that initial version of, uh, identifications done by August 2025. And then consolidate everything into a single, modern, accessible document, even though it's a draft, uh, by the end of September 2025. So we will have an actual UDO in a not great state, but something at least completed by then. And then, yeah, go ahead.
Ken, uh, you know, from your objectives and your initial discussion, you identify quick wins.
Yes.
I don't see quick wins outcome in one, two, or three. So I would suggest you consider, you know, what's the milestone? Would be, if there are some quick things that, uh, planning commission really needs that just simplifies your life greatly, when are they and when we're going to put them on?
That's a great point. Uh, so we did talk about that, uh, as well, uh, rather extensively, because again, we do want the quick wins. We're actually going to be talking about that in just a moment as well in more detail. Uh, but, so it's not within this, because it was almost like, we didn't want to over commit, and because again, we don't, we don't know what the quick wins are yet on this. But having said that, I'm comfortable, uh, within Section Two, creating something that is at least broad enough to be like, we're going to be focusing on quick wins during this time. And ideally get, uh, at least them identified and hopefully moving by the end of October 2025.
I think that's entirely doable, and that would be a, a good placeholder.
Excellent, very good.
May I ask?
Yeah, of course.
Um, is there some sort of landing that takes this type of schedule? And while we're doing it this year with three seats on the council, it's going to be appropriately, or up for.
There's not a ma, there's not a mandate that's been given to us, uh, within this. But the idea is that this has been some, this is actually the second UDO committee, uh, that's been put together on this. Uh, the first one, uh, didn't work out for a variety of reasons. I don't think we're quite clear on every single reason on it, but we know that it was a very difficult task in order to identify, uh, you know, what the UDO ultimately would look like and the amount of work that would go into it, et cetera, on this. Uh, so we, a, as actually the, as planning commissioners, we recognize and we actually said to ourselves that, hey, this is an opportunity for us to, for everybody to, to have the opportunity to understand what the ordinances are and things like that. So this was actually brought up from us, uh, and in collaboration, talking to city council as well. Uh, we talked, uh, from, everybody from Mayor Lerner to Susan Brown, Frank Dastadio, et cetera. Uh, and we just proposed this idea to them on it. And we said, you know, it's just an opportunity, and I think that, again, we have the expertise as, at least from a citizen point of view, in order to pull this together on this. And ultimately, we pitched it to them, uh, city council approved it, uh, in November. Uh, and, uh, you know, we've been kicking off the conversation from that. Regarding the comments about the, the city council seats, uh, this is not a political document or anything like that. It's more, much more of an organization, reorganization around things.
You're talking about the perspective of, you, you are going to need your final approval.
Yep.
And you could actually have final approval at the end of 2025, and then have a group of three, a majority that may not necessarily approve potential changes. I've just, I just thought that was, that's why I was asking if there was some form of state mandate or something.
No, no, no.
By the end of that year.
And, and I don't see this happening by the end of 2025.
Absolutely, yeah.
This is, this is in through 2026.
Yep.
Is, is what we're looking at. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And like I was mentioning earlier, the idea is that we will continue to go in front of city council, let them know, uh, about our progress. Ideally, we'll also get their feedback to us as well on it, so that way there's no surprises on all this, and this will be an ongoing conversation. Yep.
And if I may just add one additional point, is the, the goal of this entire steering committee isn't so much to change the existing ordinances that are already in place. So it wouldn't necessarily be voting on new ordinances that are going to affect either non-conforming use, new uses, or anything like that. It's just, um, like Commissioner Hamner said, it's, it's a reorganization of what is already in place. So from a voting perspective, even whether we have council members on their way out, new council members on their way in, these are, these are ordinances that are already adopted in place, we're just putting them all into one cohesive document.
Yep.
And, and I guess that's just, you know, one of the things with that. I mean, there, there may be items that we do identify a, as we go forward that, that are new um, or, or really need to be changed. And of course, at that point in time, those will be given to, to council, and then it's up to council to go ahead and decide whether or not they want that type of change. And then it's very likely that are very possible, depending on that. If it's an ordinance change or new ordinance, then it would actually then come back to the actual planning commission, which is, which is separate to go ahead and do the review and, and things, is that typical process is. Um, so we're hoping there's not many, but I'm, I'm sure there will be some, um, in there that we just don't have anything. Um, and, you know, we find that through our discussions, public input, experts, um, going through Fayetteville, that it's something that we, we really should have. Um, so that would be handled a little bit different than typically just, you know, the reorganizing and, and consolidating type of thing. So again, we're hoping there's not very much of that. Um, but, but reality is that there may be some.
Yep. I'll just conclude with this. If surprises pop up between city council reacting to what we're doing, or what, uh, we are surprised in terms of what city council is interpreting what we're doing, somebody has messed up. Uh, so again, the idea is, you know, communicate as much as possible on this. And so that way, everybody's on the same page throughout this entire process.
Good point.
Yep. All right. Section Three, finalizing the UDO. Uh, so there is 13 months scheduled for this. And the idea again is that, you know, we've set up the foundation for this, we've created an initial draft of it, knowing that it's going, knowing that draft is probably not going to be great, but the idea is that we will then start to really go into the nitty gritty details, get it finalized, uh, over a period of 13 months. Um, and the, uh, so the first point on this, steering committee and/or consultants to formally work towards completing the final document. Ensuring regulations assigned with, uh, aligned with best practices, modern technology and business, again, using language from the mission statement. Uh, that will be ongoing through the end of December 2026. On that, uh, present additions and clarifications, uh, for adoption to city council. Again, you know, we'll, uh, begin those conversations in November 2025 and ongoing through the end of December 2026. Again, you know, depending on the amount of changes and all that, we will absolutely go in front of city council and let them know on those things. Ensuring legal compliance with state and federal laws, so obviously this is incredibly important. Uh, the idea is behind this is that we'll have a tentative start date in terms of the first structured legal review, uh, between October and December 2025. Again, with that kind of not great draft on that. But then also work to really start making sure that the legal compliance happens in a very finalized manner, uh, July through December 2026. And then also engage the public, uh, is a point on there as well. Uh, we want to cut, conduct at least two rounds of public education sessions, uh, on this, uh, and those dates are TBD at this point. And that is the objectives. Oh, actually, sorry, uh, real quick. Uh, we actually have some additional dates on here to present progress and input to city council. Again, we had that broader range on there, but we definitely want to have at least three on those. February 2026, June 2026, and October 2026, with more, of course, available within that. And then ideally, the final step, uh, having everything, uh, the, the final version of the UDO adopted by city council in December 2026. And that is how you eat an elephant, is break it out by a bunch of steps. And, uh, that's the plan. Any questions, concerns? All right. With that, um, again, the idea was that we would approve the objectives, uh, mission statement and goals. Uh, we had one major suggestion, uh, which was to include a line item of, uh, including quick wins within the second, uh, phase on that. Do we have any motion to approve these three documents with that, uh, with that change, or anything else you guys want to include in this?
Chairman, I, uh, make a motion to approve the goals, mission statement and objectives with the addition in, was that in Section Two?
Section Two.
In Section Two of, uh, I wouldn't say a determination, but a, a identification is, is more so, of, of possible quick wins.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those documents are now approved. All right, we have a few more agenda items. Discussion topic number two is to begin drafting our own sections for our own framework, which again is basically making this version of this. Uh, as we just approved just a moment ago, that needs to be done, a target date of the end of April 2025 on this. Um, if you're like me, you've read over this, but you haven't, uh, you know, really gone into it in extreme detail and started thinking about the way that it applies to Peachtree City on this. Uh, my thoughts on this is to basically, I can take this document, uh, put it into a Microsoft Word document that's within our Teams channel right here. And for us to start, uh, using this as a basis and start incorporating, uh, our own ideas based on what city staff has already presented to us, uh, in terms of, uh, documentation and initial ideas. And as well, uh, we can start incorporating again, some of the, uh, some of the advisory group that Mr. Larson's a part of as well. We can start incorporating those things into it. So the idea is that we can use the next month and a few days to start, uh, working on these things and organizing it in a way that, uh, would work for us initially. Uh, so any concerns about that plan? Of course, we can talk about it within Teams, uh, give updates on our progress and all that good stuff.
No, I think, uh, even though we just approved quick wins as part of Section Two, I would think this would be a quick win for Section One to kind of guide us in how we're going to build it.
Right.
I agree.
Yep, that sounds good. But any, any other comments, concerns about the initial plan?
Nope.
Perfect, all right, well, we will continue to work on it, very similar to what we did for the, the other three documents. Uh, we can work on it together, uh, within Microsoft Teams, and of course, keep communication within that platform as well, uh, on our progress on it, and we'll continue to talk about it in the, uh, let's see, we have, is it the 14th? Is the next planning commission meeting?
Correct.
And of course, we'll do a check-in, uh, within the UDO section, uh, after that meeting, and ideally finalize it, uh, within the next meeting from there.
Uh, maybe I'll just, just for the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you possibly create a section on the city's website that would have links to all your reference documents that you're using, like the Fayetteville UDO and any other things, any ordinances that you may be discussing? So that we can go to one stop and we just review all.
I think it's a good idea. We are right now actually putting all the documents, I was mentioning a moment ago, we have a Teams group that is hosted by the city right now. Those documents, we can create links to those and literally link it to the, the webpage from there. So again, once we start working on the website page for it, that's something that would be great for us to incorporate. And I'll make sure, communicate with you guys in terms of like, what's appropriate to put up there and all that good stuff. But yes, transparency is important. Yep.
How do we feel about potentially creating a, I'm not sure if it'd be a Gmail or if the city would want it to be, have the city's domain, but just a email specific to U D O steering committee that we could access and review where public that may not want to come to the meetings, may not want to speak about things, may just have questions, but just as another point of engagement for individuals that don't want to come.
Yep. We have talked about that. And other steering committees have done that as well, like the SPOS group did that. So yes, I would, I would recommend that we include that as well. All right. Any other comments? All right. Discussion item four, identifying all of Peachtree City's ordinances. Not to belabor the point, we've talked about this already extensively, and city staff is aware of this, and they're already working through those things as well. Not sure if you have anything you want to add on to that, but?
Well, you know, we haven't identified everything, but just to give you some quick numbers of, you know, what we know for sure needs to be incorporated is, you know, we have several different sections of the ordinance. For instance, signs has its own chapter, twenty-two pages. The zoning appendix is three hundred and thirty-eight pages. The land development ordinance appendix is two hundred and nineteen pages. And we have an appendix that talks about annexations that's forty pages. All that adds up to six hundred and nineteen pages. And we haven't even gone into the building section to, to see what we might need from there. So it's pretty hefty.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Well, thank you for identifying those to begin with, and we'll keep going, of course, as well. All right. Discussion point five, again, we've already briefly talked about this, arranging contact for Fayetteville's U D O. This is already summarized in the announcements as well, so we'll continue to move forward on that. Six, establishing a website presence. Again, we've talked about that. Again, the links to the public documents is appropriate for that. And then also we can work, and we can talk about this offline as well, again, about making a, a email address that can go to all of us as well, in line with other committees that have happened in the past.
I will say that for the website as well as the email address, I plan to introduce that to the city manager during our next one-on-one meeting.
Okay.
So those are things, of course, you will have to give that clearance and approval on first. Yep.
All right. And then discussion item number seven, establishing a date to present our initial progress to city council. Again, we had that as May, but, and again, we can talk about this more offline. We don't need to workshop it right this second, but let's take a look at the dates when city council meets. Ideally, I would love to do the, one of the evening sessions that they have in late May and see if they're comfortable with having us speak. All right. And those are all the discussion items that we had. Are there any other final questions, comments before we adjourn?
No. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys. And, and thank you guys for coming out as well. And good comments, good questions. And thanks, of course, always to city staff. You guys have been great and really good partners on this. Do we have an emotion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.